Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winneka Village Council Study Session for March 11th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everybody, please mute your cell phones and anything else that makes noise. And I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Orsek?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dolman?
Here.
President Rince?
Here.
Okay, item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience who wishes to make, speak to or address council on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're here for streetscape, that's for later, but if you want to talk about anything else, you can come on up and share your thoughts with us. Come on up, Ted.
Hello, so...
Over here, please.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, it's a different day. Hello, so I'm sorry, it's gonna be a little incendiary. But you know, it's, I'm glad that the statement was right about how this village is a beacon, a shining beacon on the hill of rural following and openness and listening to the people and not making decisions in secret. That was read last week when apparently there wasn't anyone here because, just because I decide to go home and eat after, you know, being at work for 12 hours, you know, I can't stay for the whole meeting. But what I found interesting in that statement is that that statement is so self-serving. It's hypocritical because the village does that when it suits its own desires. And I have two examples that we should discuss, but we never will. The first is the sidewalk, right? The sidewalk, the village met in secret in a closed meeting and made a decision to sell the sidewalk. That is documented in staff emails to the owners adjoining the sidewalk. It says, as you know, the village council has decided that they're gonna sell you the sidewalk. That was before any public meeting was ever held. Clearly not rural following when the reason for the closed meeting was to talk about it, not to decide it. And yes, the village did a great job of hiding it from the public. And so since I don't have unlimited funds and I'm not gonna take you to court and sue you over it, the OMA timelines expired and I had no recourse. But it is not following the rules and it is not listening to the people. The other option, the other thing is the undisclosed buried concrete structure built into the lake. The village has rules. You have to follow the permit that's issued. But I guess if you're rich enough, you can go ahead and build a like 10-ton structure without a permit. And then when that structure is discovered, the village won't tell you to stop working, which is what you're supposed to do when you violate the permit. No, what the village will do is it will support in aggressively pursuing a charge against a violation of the village code against perhaps the person that discovered that illegal activity. So don't, don't sit, don't, don't, don't be here saying how you are so open and supportive and listen to the public when you clearly don't when it suits your needs. Now, yes, the village could acknowledge these failures. I mean, I acknowledge my mistakes and my failures when I make them. I did that just a few weeks ago. But rather than doing that, the villagers will clam up knowing that there isn't any real threat to it and will talk about how it's such a great and open and rural-following organization. All right, I'm gonna go have some dinner.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move forward. Item three tonight is the Hubbard Woods Streetscape Concept Plan and Traffic Parking Study. Tonight, Jody Mariano with TESCA Associates, Dan Brinkman with Gualt Hamilton and village staff will present Streetscape... You know, I love Streetscape. You think I'd be able to pronounce it, right? Streetscape Design Concepts and Community Input Regarding the Design Concepts for the Hubbard Woods Business District. Additionally, council will be provided with a summary of the traffic and parking study conducted by Gualt Hamilton. Community Development Director David Schoen is here to kick us off.
Good evening. So this evening, we are looking for direction from the council regarding two items. One, trying to come to some conclusion on the preferred Streetscape design concept for the Hubbard Woods Business District and then direction regarding continuing work on the remainder of the Phase One Engineering Report. At your June study session last year, Jody Mariano with TESCA Associates and village staff presented to the council two Streetscape design concepts for the Hubbard Woods Business District and shared what we had heard from the community members regarding those two similar but slightly different designs. Prior to settling on a preferred concept, council requested that staff conduct a traffic study to assist council with a couple of issues. This evening, Jody is going to briefly review the elements that differ between the two concept designs and then Dan Brinkman with Gualt Hamilton Associates along with Obed and Jim are going to review the traffic study with you. After our presentation, we look forward to the council's discussion and receiving direction from you. Jody?
Thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jody Mariano, landscape architect with TESCA Associates and pleased to be here this evening to carry the project forward and to talk a little bit about the Streetscape Plan. So I think David already touched on this, so I'm gonna move on to the next one. So a brief overview of the concept plan, and we're happy to kind of delve into details further, but just as a refresher, the project study area here is the same as what we looked at together the last time. We're in the Hubbard Woods District. It's outlined by the green line, north is to your right, and we're along Green Bay Road, which is controlled by IDOT. And we're also focusing on the roadways along and around the Hubbard Woods Park and Tower Court. So generally, we are looking between Chatfield Road, just south of Chatfield Road to the south, up to about, north of Linden Avenue to the north. We worked closely with Glencoe staff as the space north of Scott Avenue is within the jurisdiction of Glencoe. As a refresher, our scope is to enhance the Streetscape in Hubbard Woods and to build upon all the Streetscape improvements that were made in the Elm Street Business District. Features include improving pedestrian safety, parking lighting, decorative pavements, site furnishing, signage, trees, plantings, outdoor seating and dining. Everything leading up into this point was that folks in Hubbard Woods really wanted to see improvements to be more pedestrian-friendly and also to carry forward the improvements that were recently done in the Elm Street District. Just as David said, we had been here to speak about this before. In June of 2024, leading up to the village council presentation, we had two touchpoints with the community. Community survey number one, we had 580 folks participate. That was open between November 2023 to January 2024. And then we had public meeting number one in January earlier, 2024. Following that, we had an online activity, same kind of materials, but just input was provided online. We presented that material back to you all, June of 2024. And then since that time, we sat down and met with IDOT in August of last year. Dan moved forward with a traffic analysis and here we are tonight. So after tonight, we, you know, look forward to hearing your comments. Then we will be moving forward with preparing a final report including the preferred plan and cost estimates. So as a refresher, some of the key takeaways that we heard from the community. Being on Green Bay Road is really tough. It's a very auto-dominated corridor, as everyone knows, but it's to prioritize pedestrian safety and make it more comfortable. And we do that by improving our crosswalks, our bumpouts, adding stop signs where we can. There's interest in a stop sign at Green Bay Road and Merrill Street and also a desire for mid-block crossings. So I will say, the mid-block crossings and the bumpouts in particular are not things that are typically allowed by IDOT. And so that's something that is being taken into consideration as far as a potential jurisdictional transfer. Calming speeding traffic via bumpouts was a desire. There was a lot of discussion about parking impacts that they need to be managed. There was a request by the public to have a traffic study to evaluate all the traffic improvements, including what happens around the horseshoe space. Lighting improvements were desired. Streetscape furnishings and products generally should match what's been done in Elm Street. We asked folks to weigh in about whether or not there should be things that were unique for the Hubbard Woods District and those things would be tree grates, holiday decor and banners. And then supporting businesses, providing space for people to put out their own decor and sandwich board signs and things like that. Holiday decor and displays was desired. And leading up to, as I mentioned earlier, all of these improvements really do require jurisdictional transfer of Green Bay Road from IDOT to the village so that we could implement those things. Just as a visual, as a reminder, what it would look like if this road was improved under IDOT jurisdiction is on top. And so you can see that we can add the bumpouts to the side streets like at Gauge. And then the image at the bottom shows how the bumpouts, if it was controlled by the village, bumpouts could extend into Gauge and also into Green Bay Road. IDOT generally would not permit bumpouts into Green Bay Road. They also wouldn't permit some of the other features too close to the roadway curves, things like bollards and planter pots. So the preference was the lower image, which requires jurisdictional transfer. The other thing that would require jurisdictional transfer that we heard a lot of support for was a mid-block crossing. This mid-block crossing here is shown generally around where Town and Oak is. It would be a bumpout that would shadow the on-street parking and allow people to cross the street. It slows traffic, makes it more pedestrian-friendly. And then the intersections at Tower Road and Green Bay Road and Tower Court, it's a really challenging intersection, set of intersections today. We've got two traffic signals, as everyone knows. We heard a lot of concerns about not only how people get from the neighborhoods to the district, but also from the neighborhoods to the lakefront and also to the bike trail, just to the east. And so the recommendation here is to look into enhancements at the corners with decorative paving treatments and also realigning some crosswalks with decorative paving, carrying forward the Streetscape treatments with trees and continuous sidewalks to the south so that that south section by Chatfield feels like it's part of the district as well. We presented three different alternatives for the horseshoe area. So this is the Hubbard Woods Park and Green Bay Road is to the west and Tower Court is to the east. So you see Metra is the brown box on the right-hand side. Today, the circulation runs counterclockwise, just like you see in option one at the left. And there's a couple other options that we tested with the community, which changed direction, looked at a two-way segment up at Merrill. Ultimately, the feedback that we heard was a preference for option one with some Streetscape enhancements to make safer pedestrian access and to add some parking. The amenities, so the amenities on the left were features that you see here in the Elm Street District that folks would like to see carried forward into the Hubbard Woods District. And the amenities to the right, the banners, holiday lighting and decor and the tree grates are features that would be new and unique to Hubbard Woods. With that, I'm gonna turn it to Dan.
Go back.
Go back. Oh, Obed, I thought you were saying go back.
Do you have questions?
Oh, I can. Are we doing questions now?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. I'm happy to answer any questions. I thought we were gonna go through it.
Any questions on the front end here? No? Okay. Keep going.
That was easy. Let's go.
So, thank you, Jody. Good evening, everyone. So now we will switch our focus to the second section of the presentation, which is like talk about the traffic study and give the council an update on where we at. So before I invite Dan to walk us through the process of the traffic feasibility study and present their findings and the recommendation, I would just like to give a quick background about the study. So as Jody discussed about the design concept, there are, there are three different alternative options. And before we finalize our design options, it was necessary to evaluate the feasibility of the alternatives and their impacts on the traffic and the pedestrian. So for that, last year in October, village awarded a contract to Gualt Hamilton to conduct the Phase One Study of the Hubbard Woods District. The scope of the study consists of two parts. Part one was the traffic feasibility section, which primarily focused on gathering the initial data, like traffic counts and the existing condition, and then evaluate the feasibility of the design concept alternatives, such as traffic circulation along the Hubbard Woods Metra Station and different control options for Merrill Intersections. And after that, after finalizing the final design option, the study will continue with the part two, which to focus to complete the Phase One Engineering Report, which is an IDOT requirement. As Jody mentioned, Green Bay Road is an IDOT road. So IDOT required the completion of the Phase One Engineering Report for any proposed improvement on the right-of-way and also for the further jurisdictional transfer. So now I would request Dan to present the traffic study they conducted and present their findings and the recommendations.
Good evening. Dan Brinkman, Senior Transportation Engineer with Gualt Hamilton Associates. As David and Jody said, when, as the Streetscape study was going on, there were some questions that were asked that fall more in the engineering realm than the planning realm. So we were engaged to take a look at the traffic feasibility study. Has a number of different moving parts to it, including traffic and parking counts that were done last December and November, full topographic and right-of-way survey of the entire district. Two different studies looking at potential traffic control for the Merrill Street-Green Bay Road intersection, a parking utilization study where we actually went out and counted parked cars hourly basis throughout the district, and then the horseshoe circulation study. There are a couple more pieces to this feasibility study left. One of them is finalizing our review of the signalized operations throughout the district and specifically the Green Bay and Tower Road intersection, as well as we've subcontracted a geotechnical engineer to come out and do a pavement, pavement course and do some pavement analysis that'll all go into the feasibility study. First, we'll talk about the traffic control, the two different options that were studied for the Merrill and Green Bay Road intersection. First, we took a look at whether a traffic signal was warranted. We do this based on requirements that are published in that federal document there, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Started with a 24-hour turning movement count, and again, that was done on a Thursday in December of last year. We look at the last five years of the official crash data that we get from the Department of Transportation. There are eight available warrants in the MUTCD. None of those technical requirements are met. The easiest one, or generally the most achievable one, is the peak hour volume. And like all good engineers, we have a chart for that. So this comes out of the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. What we're looking at is a single lane, a single lane approach, so that's that lowest curve. The little green dot represents the traffic, the combination of traffic volumes on Green Bay Road and Merrill Street. We have about 126 vehicles in the peak hour after we take out volume that would be future right turns on red. The Department of Transportation requires us to do that. So we are a long ways from warranting a traffic signal at Green Bay and Merrill. So then we take a look at, is an always-stop warranted? Again, same federal document, different set of standards, same count, same crash history. What's significant here is there is an ability to warrant an always-stop based on a crash history. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, there have not been the sufficient number of crashes, which would be the angle or pedestrian-type crashes or the significant injuries or fatalities. So those are all good things, obviously, but they do not assist in warranting a traffic signal. One thing we did notice out here, even though the counts were done in December, was fairly moderate pedestrian volumes, higher in the afternoon than the morning. The four busiest hours range from about 25 pedestrians trying to cross Green Bay Road to almost 40. So we look at, again, pedestrian volume. What we're looking at, the technical requirements for warranting an always-stop, is we want eight hours where there are more than 300 vehicles per hour on Green Bay Road and more than 200 vehicles per hour. And in that 200 vehicles per hour from the Merrill approach, we also count pedestrians trying to cross the road. So we had three hours where that was met and they were all later in the afternoon. But again, the technical requirements, the volume requirements to warrant always-stop are not met. MUTCD, when it talks about always-stop, it gives, in the most recent edition, it gives some other criteria or a little bit of a leeway, some discretion as to when you can also consider an always-stop. One of those things is site distance. We have a 20 mile an hour posted speed limit, 25, 30, most of the time traveled. So site distance really isn't an issue or a concern at the Merrill and Green Bay intersection. We don't have a sufficient number of left turns. We don't have a high left turn conflict where we would consider an always-stop for controlling those. There's a very broad, similar roadways, similar operating characteristics. Clearly Merrill Street and Green Bay Road are pretty different operationally. So that's not there. So the, one of the last ones is the need to control pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. So again, it's kind of discretionary. We don't meet that required minimum volume, but we did see, you know, pretty, I would say fair to moderate pedestrian volumes. And again, considering it's December, I'm guessing that if we did our counts in the late spring or early summer, particularly in the afternoon with activity at the park, we probably would see higher volumes. So I think an argument could be made to install an always-stop here, but in reality, the Department of Transportation is not going to, it's not probably going to listen to or hear my argument. So the next thing we did was a parking utilization study. So again, this was hourly observations. We did a Saturday and a weekday last November. So again, once an hour, our technicians went out and counted up the parked cars by block face. We have 25 different zones or lots or block faces throughout the district that we tabulated the parking counts on. If you can see there, there's a, I'll have a blow up in a minute. We use green, yellow and red when we talk about parking. Hourly, if it's green, that's 60% or less occupancy. Yellow is 60 to 85%. Red is higher than 85%. And as you'll see in a minute, there were a couple of conditions where we had to go with dark red, which was actually over 100% occupancy. That was, there were occasions, hours out there where there were more cars parked on the block face than there were marked spaces. I don't think we're gonna find anything, I don't think we found anything that's gonna surprise anybody. On-street spaces are at a premium. Pretty much 85% are more full from 10 o'clock through the end of the day on Saturday. That big grand band of green that you see there, that is the parking structure. At most, 54% occupied, I want to say, is what we counted. So again, what we did notice was, again, a lot of available parking in the parking structure, the on-street, the short-term spaces are at a premium. While we didn't actually do a duration study, which when I say that, I mean, we didn't keep track of how long people stayed in the on-street spaces, but general observation from my technicians is that the posted hourly requirements or the post, isn't enforced very well. So people are staying longer than the posted parking times. Like I said, this is, I've had it one or two times before where we had people get very creative, particularly with on-street spaces and makeup spaces. So we did see that a couple of times here. You can see those dark red boxes where we had more than 100% parking. The last thing that we looked at was the circulation around the horseshoe or the Tower Court around Hubbard Woods Park. As Jody mentioned, there were three options that came out of the Streetscape study. One to maintain the existing circulation and install the stop sign at Merrill. One to reverse the circulation and install the stop sign at Merrill. And then one to reverse the circulation but leave Merrill Street between Green Bay and Tower as two-way. And again, put the always-stop in. So for the purposes of our study, we looked at the three options with the always-stop in place. So what we did was we took a look at the, all the existing traffic counts and the traffic data that we collected. We reassigned that based on where we believed the origin and destination of people, where they intended to go and how they would arrive at their intended destination if the traffic flows were reversed. To be perfectly honest, there wasn't a single compelling reason to change it. I didn't see anything that told me, boy, we have to do this. That would be the direction I would recommend. There were a couple things that we did see that it would say a reason not to do it. So if we reverse the flow of traffic, that means we have traffic queuing at a traffic signal leaving Gauge Street trying to get to Green Bay Road. I don't think I have to tell you how inefficient the signals are sometimes, particularly during the peak hours out there. And what we were seeing in our analysis is queues along Gauge Street that would stretch back halfway, almost three-quarters of the way back across that block face from the traffic signal. That's gonna, I don't think we want cars queued in front of the businesses. I don't think we want the cars queued in front of the parking spaces that are there. There's a couple of other minor things. Again, the queues were the biggest thing and we looked at existing traffic. We really just did our analysis based on if we took what we counted in 2024 and reassigned it. Obviously, if that got reversed, traffic tends to grow over time, so the queues would probably be even longer in the future. Couple other things, again, parking conflicts with the circulation. Even though we didn't see a whole lot of it, Metra drop-off, passengers are on the wrong side if we change the circulation from where they get off now. And then delivery vehicles, particularly the left turn from the alley onto Gauge Street would be extremely difficult for anything bigger than a car. So our recommendation is to lead the circulation along. As Obed said, we've kind of been looking at this since October when we were awarded the contract. We did our project kickoff. We did all our topographic right-of-way survey, vehicle pedestrian counts. And the different memoranda that I just talked about, which brings us here to the village council presentation. Again, we're looking for some direction regarding the Streetscape and some of the geometry, at which point we dig in to that preferred alternate and try to, not try to, we dig into the preferred alternate and do the preliminary design, which leads us to the Phase One Study to make sure that the improvements are eligible for federal funding should a source be found for that. We would start that once we get direction on, you know, is the village gonna take the JT? Are we gonna go with the big bumpouts? Again, we would refine that design. We would go through all the environmental clearances. Essentially, Phase One, in its truest sense, is a feasibility study as well. The federal government wants to make sure before they spend their money on anything that we're not having a significant impact on the environment. So that's historical buildings, that's, which is our cultural concerns. That would be any wetlands. There's no wetlands in the business district, but nonetheless, there's also biological, which would be flora, fauna, any negative impacts that a roadway or transportation improvement would have on that. Also gives the opportunity for more public input. So we would work through that process through the Bureau of Local Roads and Streets. Ultimately, our goal would be to come back to you with our preliminary findings, our preliminary engineering all completed, a more detailed cost estimate than Jody's gonna prepare on the preliminary end, and then have a Phase One Report where we could get design approval from the feds and ultimately move into the next phase, which would be Phase Two and preparation of construction drawings. That's all I've got. So if there's questions, I'll do my best.
Questions? Go ahead. Again, guys.
So I never thought a signal would be permitted there because it's too close to the signal at Scott. But assuming, and maybe this comes with a more robust Phase One Report, but it looks like, even though there's two schools, I think your report, I only talked about one school. There's Sacred Heart right on, behind.
Right. Full disclosure, I look at the district's map and their boundaries. I didn't realize.
No, I know. And that's why I called, I called Rob.
And that's down on Gauge, so it really wouldn't affect Merrill.
Yeah. Yeah. Although I think, you know, especially summer camps and stuff, because I live in this area, so I see, you know, they take kids across to the park when the, you know, when the weather's nice. But I don't think that's gonna change, you know, two schools. But, so we know that the warrants aren't there for a signal, the warrants aren't there for a full-way stop. I'm thinking of something more, would there be something if we get control that you can hit a button like we have on Hibbard Road to facilitate, you know, kids particularly or even pedestrians? Because when I'm walking to the train in the morning, you know, there's a good 40 people that are trying to get to the train, crossing Green Bay that are trying to get to the train, crossing Green Bay Road, and you're at like 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, you're conflicting with all the New Trier traffic going down to New Trier, down south on Green Bay. So that sort of on-demand traffic kind of pedestrian button situation, I get that IDOT's not gonna approve that, but is that something that we could look at?
They would be more likely to allow that than they would a signal.
Yeah.
At this location.
Okay.
There are federal guidelines in the state, actually revised a couple of years ago. Their guidelines to allow those push-button flashers, RRFB, Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, is the fancy term, push-button activated. To do that at intersections, prior to that, they were really only allowed at mid-block locations or not, particularly at intersections. There is still some concern that the folks on the side street who don't necessarily see that aren't sure what to do when they pull up to the intersection while the lights flashing and the pedestrians are moving. But that's certainly, you know, another tool in the toolbox that could be considered. If it was gonna be considered here, I would suggest ones that reach out over the pavement. We don't want to put it right on the side street where we have all the on-street parking and one big truck blocks the, blocks the view of that. So we've done that in a couple of other locations there.
So it sounds like, even if there's not warrants for a signal or a four-way stop, that there could be other things we could do to make it.
Certainly.
Because my gut is, if you make it easier to cross Green Bay, people will park more in the parking structure, and that will make it easier. As opposed to, I hear from people a lot of times that they keep circling in the horseshoe until they can find on-street parking because they don't want to park, you know, there's maybe a psychological issue parking in the parking structure, but I think it's also the difficulty of crossing, especially if you're gonna cross in Merrill and go north. You know, it's obviously easy to go, you know, to, is it Gage, and cross at the light there.
Yeah.
So anything that could help facilitate people actually using the 50% capacity that exists in the structure, I think would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
So related to that, one of my questions was, we looked at, I get why we would not want to reverse the flow because of the backlog, in the horseshoe, because of the backlog of traffic at Gage, but one of the things we were thinking of in Option 3 was that having the two-way on Merrill would help encourage people to use the garage. I realized we didn't look at keeping the flow, but then keeping the direction it is, but still making Merrill two directions. Did you all find that that theory, that making Merrill two-way really wasn't gonna change people's use to the parking garage?
I don't think we're gonna see, I don't think you're gonna see a whole lot of additional uses of the garage. I think you could accommodate, accomplish that with some improved signage, nonetheless, maybe an education thing. The real reason we looked at it is, what if I get to the end of Merrill and I'm, okay, I don't want to park in the garage. Now I'm stuck. There's really not.
Oh, I was thinking that Merrill would be two ways, so you could still.
Right, so I've driven down Merrill from, straight down Merrill, Green Bay.
I'm sorry, then you're right, okay.
I don't want to park in the garage, now I'm stuck. And there's really not the footprint there to turn cars around.
Parking behavior, it's a whole psychological specialty. I see that. My other question was.
Right, we could talk for, we could talk for hours about why people in the suburbs just don't want to park in garages.
We were just talking about that, yeah. My one other question, just out of curiosity, is the 7:00 PM dark red spot, where in particular are people creating their own parking spots at 7:00 in Hubbard Woods? I was thinking, is it sort of the Minos, Wanawatos, Domino's area?
Let's see. This is.
You also have the.
From.
Try to perk in there.
Let's see.
I was just, where the volume was at 7:00 PM that warranted.
There's a handful of spots. There's, these are all these, the four-hour spaces were on, let's see, what is this, Merrill? So that's Tower from, oh, I'm sorry, down here. So Green, on the east side of Green Bay Road between Gage and Tower in the later part of the day, so again, it's not, it's, it's one more car than is marked spaces, but still, it's people getting creative. I've got a couple favorite spots. There's a big table that I could go through and show you.
I did try to read it, I have to say.
Oh, yeah, well.
He's responsible for that.
I am, I think I'm part of that. We tried to boil it down.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, so that was.
Never.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
And again, that's, you know, again, the guys spend all day out there, walking the streets, counting up the parked cars, and they're like, some, sometimes it's little cars, sometimes it's people being creative. You know, they are marked spaces, which are generally more efficient, but.
For Walgreens, it's always sort of a crazy zone.
Along the same lines as what Tina was talking about with, you know, having a bump, a button or something, would bump outs with no stop signs at that corner, I know it's not really a corner, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to slow traffic on Merrill short of a stop sign, like, like one of the bump outs at Gage, or does that bump out not work if there's no stop sign?
The bump outs would work whether there's a stop sign or not, in terms of shortening those pedestrian crossings.
I mean, I think her idea is better, and both, both ideas require IDOT approval anyway, so if IDOT is in charge, it maybe doesn't matter, but I just wonder if there could be something there, like a small bump out that would just sort of slow the traffic at that area, or that might cause backups and not be useful.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, so the bump outs that we were proposing, that Jody had, had kind of highlighted here, I'd at would not allow the bump outs.
I know.
And one of the biggest concerns with that Merrill and Green Bay intersection is you have parking on both sides and then the drive lane. And so the end of the current pedestrian sidewalk is so set far back that if you put a flashing sign, that's what Dan was indicating, it's hard to see that. So you either have to put a structure so it reaches out over so people can see it. We discussed some of those concerns, so I think what we're really leaning towards would be to put the four-way stop. There's some discretion that I have as it relates to installing that four-way stop sign. I think in taking a look at what it provides for us, it would be a better approach. It also opens up the door for conversations with IDOT about those corners a little bit. So if we chose not to take ownership of Green Bay Road, we might be able to extend those, I'm not gonna say bump outs, but kind of little mini bump outs a little.
Yeah, a mini bump out, that's what I was talking about. Good idea.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
I was thinking exactly on the lines that you were, where we have, I think about Sheridan Road as I go down to the city, and they sometimes have these little flags you take out of the bucket. Evanston has those, yeah. I think that's a, maybe a step in the right direction, but I, people are just on remote control between being busy and kids in the back and cell phones, I hate to say it, something's not blinking. I just think that you have to visually arrest what's going on there. So I, I'm glad to, it'd be nice if we could somehow pull a rabbit out of the hat with IDOT and get that. That way, if there's a stop sign there, you know, it's just gonna be rolling stop signs all day long. People are just gonna be rolling it, which is another way to raise revenue, I guess, but I think it'd be a problem. I'm personally glad that you're not reversing the flow in the horseshoe, that it's staying where it is. I just, I think a two-way is gonna, on just that little piece, is gonna be tough for Minos, and it's gonna be tough for people coming around and running into somebody coming that way, so come the other way. I think that's good. The bump outs, I just, I'm still trying to get my head around. I think there's a place for bump outs, but that road is so narrow as it is. And I think on a, on kind of, in certain areas, it's great. I just don't know if, I look at that and see how it's gonna affect traffic. I just don't know if that's the right area or not for it.
Yeah, and I think when we get into the final engineering design, we'll work with Jody or the TSC team to really take a look about how far out do we want to push those bump outs. The bump outs on Green Bay Road where you've got truck traffic and you've got a heavier ADT of traffic is different than driving down Elm Street.
Right.
So where those bump outs can reach out a little bit farther, and the turning radiuses are really super critical for us. So I think when we get a little bit further design, what we did, what we did hear was is people like the bump outs. They like the distance, walking from someplace, a safe landing pad to a safe landing pad being shorter. So it can apply here. We can make it work. We just have to think about how far out we pull those mini bump outs or regular bump outs.
And you're also losing parking spaces there as you do that.
Well, so based on.
I think so.
In some cases, IDOT requires a certain distance back from the intersection, which we can stripe, and as we found in what Dan's numbers are telling us, as they become unwritten parking spaces, I'm just gonna run in for five minutes.
Yeah.
And so people have a tendency to extend over to those. So it creates a little bit of a safety issue. So I think if we, if we can, the bump outs create that, that more rigid armored type system where obviously you're not gonna go past it, so we can control that parking a little bit better.
I can just piggyback really quick. If you wanted to refer to the graphic, there would be no parking impacts to adding these bump outs. So just like Jim said, we would be creating a, we'd be shadowing the existing parking in the space where nobody can park today, but also, as Jim said, that curve, that radius that goes around each corner, that's something that would be sorted out in final engineering. It might be a little bit softer, maybe it could be a little bit sharper. From a pedestrian standpoint, we always like it to be as sharp as possible because that means it's less distance to cross. But there's a balance that we want to strike with truck traffic and.
I just look at buses and trucks that come down Green Bay Road. And you narrow it that much.
Sure, absolutely.
It's gonna be very difficult for.
Yeah, so we will design, what, if we do go this route, we will design to meet that standard.
Jody, are you recommending narrowing the street as it is right now with the sidewalks being widened?
We are not recommending any narrowing of the street.
No narrowing, okay. And Jim, you are recommending a four-way stop sign. Just to be clear here, that is what you're recommending here based on the ability to do it, the sort of the other standards, if you will.
Yeah, I don't want to go on the record because my boss is here, but yes, that's what we're leaning towards.
That's what you're leaning towards, okay. So the issue, we're all focused on Merrill and Green Bay Road, and part of the issue, of course, relates to just pedestrians, but also cars turning left coming out of there. Is there a way to improve that sightline at all? You know, could you take, I hate to take a parking spot out, but could that, through this north parking spot, be taken out and improve the sightline? And it is a little perilous, there's, and Tina, you made the point, or someone made the point, I don't know, but a lot of that traffic, you know, you're going north on Green Bay and you don't get a parking spot, so you're using the horseshoe. You're, I mean, a lot of that traffic, and so that left turn there is, that's just kind of a practical problem.
Yeah.
But is there a way to improve that sightline?
Yeah, so, not to cut you off, Jody, so, yeah, I mean, there is, and one of the things is, is if, as you drive down Merrill now, there's a right turn lane, there's the left, and there's almost this unwritten middle lane. You could almost fit three across.
That's a problem.
And, yeah, and the sightline issue that you really have is because the intersection's not controlled. So this really helps us, lead us towards why the argument of a stop signs work, because by doing so, we can eliminate the right lane, the left lane, the straight lane, because it allows, you're gonna reduce the stacking that's there and the uncertainty of when can I go. And so by doing so, it pulls that middle lane in, which makes those turns more unobstructed. By installing the bump outs, it actually opens that viewpoint a little bit more, and you can get a little bit further out to the intersection so you can see it. So it'll actually help improve that and help the flow of traffic coming off those side streets.
But without, let's, let's say there was a preference not to install stop signs. Could you improve the sightline to turn left there?
We could, you could still reduce it down to one lane and eliminate the additional movements, but in doing so, you'd probably wind up causing a stacking issue where things, where now it's only one at a time. And so right now, you can almost have two, two vehicles move, somebody can turn right and somebody can turn left. I think if you reduce it down without the regulatory, you'll wind up backing cars up a little bit more. I think it might exacerbate the problem and cause people to get a little bit more anxious and take risks that maybe they wouldn't.
I may be the only person thinking this, but you mentioned about the rolling stop. I mean, it just seems that you're gonna have a huge congestion at that stop sign.
I don't, you know, it's interesting because I'm there all the time, and, you know, I think the bump outs have the benefit of also increasing the visibility of pedestrians, because what I see is, you know, like, if, you know, if the, it's green at Scott, people floor it coming north on Green Bay.
Yeah.
And then you've got parked cars on either side, so the ability to have, you know, even if it's the only thing we can do is to bump out a little bit so people have greater visibility, I think that will help. And I think also because, you know, there are some de facto parking spaces that go right in front of, like, Minos and stuff, and then also right on, in Celeste Robbins' architecture, it makes it very hard, even if you're in a car, to see, to make a right turn going from Merrill south. So I just feel like the sightlines are bad, and you have people rolling through those intersections now. I mean, you'll see people who just.
So you're an advocate of the stop signs?
Well, even if, I don't know if we can get it, right? I don't, I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I didn't like the stop sign at, right by Hill and Ridge, you know, the.
Yeah, right.
Right?
I hate that stuff.
It was your idea.
But, I, no, but I, I've hated it, except it has created, when I'm dropping off at North Shore Country Day, I now have an escape route to get north on Green Bay because now I can go south, hit that, you know, so my, my point is, sometimes these stop signs, you know, create safer conditions for other areas within the same district.
Well, if it didn't lead to blocking up traffic and so on, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I just don't know about the traffic.
That's what worries me, too.
I don't know, I mean, I mean, the peak time is really.
Yeah, and we actually took a look at it. It wouldn't, and I'll let Dan chime in on this, we did look at the flow of traffic through there, and it doesn't look like the level of service of the traffic at that intersection would diminish it greatly enough that it would be an impact, but.
That's why the blinking sign to me made perfect sense, if we could pull it off.
We did look at that, so again, the always stop, and again, it's like, so in the morning, queues are longer, southbound, I think it'll be about 80 feet, so call it three and a half cars. In the evening, the northbound is a longer queue, and that was closer to 120 feet, so maybe four or five cars.
Yeah.
But again, it, it kind of, the always stop kind of meters that traffic, and the signals would be, in theory, timed better to accommodate the arrival and departure patterns that the always stop would create in between. That'd be another, that's another key point to improvements moving forward, is the signal at Gage and the signal at Scott really want to talk to each other and be adjusted so that it can be efficient there.
Can you clarify what the punchline is? I see there's a couple more slides here. Are you waiting to give us that, or, because I have, it's a leading question here.
David, are you gonna go to the schedule? Okay, Albed.
Albed, just get a couple of closing arguments and then, arguments.
All right.
Leading question here.
I've been in a stormwater.
I think it's choose your own path, if we take the jurisdictional transfer versus not. If we don't, or it's not approved, are you, is it being stated that we have a potential to get the stop sign if we wanted it?
No, so I was gonna make that point of clarification. So as Dan had kind of alluded, IDOT looks at it as, based just solely on the MUTCD manual and those regulatory warrants. It's very, you'd have to have a very strong, we're kind of at the border. In this specific case, we're, we're not close enough to make the argument to say we need a signal, a no-go. Stop signs, we're not even close for the warrants as well. By jurisdictional transferring, it's gonna allow some of those attributes and some of those hardscape items that the, that the public has said they desire to take place, the stop sign being one of them. I would have some discretion to make the argument from my end that it meets a warrant based on the volume of traffic and what we see, so we, I could make that discretionary call to put the stop signs there. Again, if it became a larger issue down the road, traffic became a major issue, we would have to come back and revisit it as a whole. I should say the council would come back and revisit it as a whole, and I can make a recommendation at that point. Based on our preliminary investigation of it, we don't see it changing the level of service so dramatically that it's gonna cause a domino effect. So I think it'll just be a lesson learned as people are familiar with it, as they get used to it. But we would definitely need to do the jurisdictional transfer in order to put the stop signs in.
Got it. Take it away, Albed.
Cool. So just one last slide before we wrap up the presentation. We would like to share the, share the conceptual schedule of the project, as there is a lot of interest in the project from the community, so we felt it is important to provide a conceptual schedule to show that where we at and what is the remaining process that needs to be done before, before the construction can begin. So as you can see, we divided the process into three phases, the planning phase, the engineering phase, and the construction phase. Currently, we are still in the planning phase, as we discussed, that the finalizing of the design concept and completion of the Phase 1 engineering report lead us to complete the planning phase, which we are anticipated sometime in the middle of next year. In next, we will go into the engineering phase, which will take quite some time. As you can see, the IDOT jurisdictional transfer is the key element in this, in that phase, and the schedule of the. and the schedule of the, the process of the jurisdictional transfer will subject to the IDOT negotiations. And we are anticipated it will take more than a year, based on what we learned from our other jurisdictional transfer process, which going with the IDOT for the Willow Road. So Jim can definitely provide more insight about that, if we'd like to know what's the process and what we are looking into that.
Is that serious? We don't start until '29?
'29.
Yeah.
Unless we can expedite, if we're moving towards a JT, we could expedite that process.
Right.
That would, that would shave time, but six months would be extremely aggressive.
Oh, yeah, well, that's not the reason to do it, but yeah.
No, I understand, but that factors a year in the planning cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah, the difficult aspect to this is, as Albed mentioned, we're in the planning phase. We finished this component up, and then we move forward with finalizing the Phase One, and then getting that adopted, or adopted and accepted by IDOT. IDOT won't let you run in parallel designing a project until they approve the Phase One. Because why, if they make a change on us, we have to modify our design. So we have to wait for that. Now, when we start the jurisdictional transfers, one of the things that we can start, that I will definitely do my best on, is one, to try to shorten the timeframe up. We're going through the process right now with everybody for Willow Road, so the team will get to know each other a little bit. Second, one of the parts of negotiation that I think we might be able to leverage a little bit is, can, IDOT, can you give us permission to start moving forward on the design aspect of it as we walk through these, knowing that the scope's not going to change? Working out who's going to pay for what, and if they're okay with the concept, maybe they'll allow us to move forward. If they do, that'll help us save some time. So we'll, of course, do everything we can to keep it moving forward. As Rob indicated, though, it could shave six to, let's say, eight months off the time. But when you start to move the schedule forward, you wouldn't be able to go out to bid until mid-year of '28. We're not going to want to start construction on this in the mid-year. That would, that'd be a nightmare. So it would, it'd be one that you were going to still talk through the construction phasing, how do we do this? What's going to be the methodology? We'll come back with our reasons why we think we phased this, or do it as one project, or however. But I think that, that'd be the approach for it.
Jim, does the construction phase include IDOT's work on the road? If we were to assume, you know, they, Chris, I think you mentioned, they have obligations to fix the road, if you will. Is that part of the construction phase?
No. They're still coming to resurface the road this year. That's still coming. So they'll be doing some ADA improvements at the corner. They'll still be resurfacing the road all the way through. Because we knew that this process was going to take so long, IDOT had asked us, do you want us to stop? And the road needs so much TLC, it would be, we'd be out there patching for years.
But I had the impression that it was more than resurfacing.
What we're doing right now, or I should say, what IDOT will be doing right now is just putting lipstick on a big.
Right.
They're going to make the road safe, they're going to make it traversable, we'll get rid of the potholes, they'll address some of the pedestrian push-button components and things like that. What we need to do, though, in the Village Council, as you all know, we invested in having IMS, which is our non-destructive roadway testing company, actually test the whole corridor. And what we found was that that sub-base and sub-grade of that road is, it's past its useful life. That will be part of our points of negotiation with IDOT, to bring this to attention that, look, this isn't just a resurfacing job like we did on Elm Street, this is a total reconstruction.
That's what I understood, that that was one of the downsides of jurisdictional transfer, jurisdictional transfer, is that we would completely be rebuilding the road, and it was a more extensive process.
Much more expensive, yeah.
And the consideration of what would happen to businesses and everything, that's what I recall from our last-
Yeah, we would still have to rebuild, rebuild the road no matter what, whether we jurisdictional transfer this or not. Part of the project includes the replacement of a very large water main that Nick talked about a little bit on the budget part. That is, based on its location, we're talking right down the middle of the road.
Is that just what Green Bay did, I mean, Glencoe did on Green Bay Road, that big project, they just did replacing water mains?
Yes.
So similar to what they just did over there?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, and then based on the condition, and by the time you make those connections, bring new services out, we'd have patches all over it. It's asphalt over a concrete road. There's actually, the original road is concrete underneath, and the concrete is failing. So it's one of those ones, when you expose it, how bad is it, where are you digging at? And they'll have to go farther, and then next thing you know, you're chasing it. We would staff preliminarily, we would make the recommendations to reconstruct that road no matter what, whether we JT'd that or not.
Who would pay for that?
That would be a negotiation with IDOT. We'd have to make the argument, if we did not take jurisdictional transfer and IDOT still controlled it, we would have to come with our information and make the argument that, look, it's past its useful life.
Yeah.
IDOT's response to us and future, or past conversations we've had with them is, IDOT doesn't reconstruct roads anymore, they just keep resurfacing it.
Really?
So it would be a hard thing for us to convince them to reconstruct that whole road. But they'll offer, they'll let us pay for it. So that's why, that's why the jurisdictional transfer works in our favor, because we can get their support for funding, grant funding, to reconstruct.
It's federal funds for that.
That's correct.
Clarify, Jim, you said IDOT this year is plan, planning to resurface?
That's correct.
And if they, like, how much do they mill off? Do they take off all this asphalt, just a little bit?
I don't know, the plan's written for me. I think they're taking three, three inches, three and a half inches off completely.
But what happens if, whatever, they, they go down too far and then it's, you know, they keep digging down this year?
That's on them. If they, if they expose too much and they find out it's their road, it's no different than when they just resurfaced Willow Road, if we all recall a few years back. IDOT came and resurfaced Willow Road east of Hibbert. They found a couple of bad spots in there, and they had to do some additional repairs. That would be on them to address, not us.
Okay. But typically, they do the pavement core before come up with the thickness, how much they want to mill and resurface, so they do not go into those issues.
Yeah, and my guess is they'll take off just enough that they don't have to deal with that. That's my guess.
That's what I'd do.
Yeah.
Time for public comment, I think? Feels like the right time. Thanks, Albed.
Okay.
Would anybody like to speak on this issue this evening?
Good evening, everyone.
And I think, you know, painting, and I think David even mentioned, you know, possibly there's some murals done, maybe that's some things that could be done, whether or not there could be some of the planned, you know, lighting and lamps and those kinds of things can maybe be brought into your, inside there as well for continuity and to have it look a lot better. So, great, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Others, come on up.
Hello, everybody. Eric Kaplan, 870 Locust, thank you for doing this. I think it's going to be a great asset to the Village. A couple of observations for some questions that weren't necessarily asked while I was listening. One thing I noticed is that the parking study was done in November. I don't think that that's a very busy time in the downtown area for a lot of cars. So I don't know how of an accurate reading you're getting, especially because there's no big events happening in the downtown area in November. The other thing is the parking garage. I think it's very confusing for a lot of people who aren't from the area, because you can only access the lower half from the horseshoe, and the upper half is a different entrance. So maybe some better signage will increase utilization of the parking garage. I don't think the study broke it down from first floor to second, or the lower level to the upper level to see which one is utilized. The lower level could be 100% utilized and nobody on the second level, and it would show as 50% occupancy. So I don't know if you're getting a full reading on that. My opinion for the horseshoe, whenever we go through it as a family and we don't find parking, but there's parking behind us, we have to make two lefts to get back into the horseshoe. And if you reverse the flow, it's much easier to go right, and you're getting rid of a lot of traffic going left at Merrill Street. So everybody's always going right in there, you're going right turn circle, it'll be a whole lot easier. My biggest reason for coming to this meeting, though, is actually this intersection that we're seeing up here. I live just to the lower left-hand corner of the parking, the parking lot where that blue symbol is basically. Dylan and I were standing at that intersection for about 15 minutes, talking about it and just throwing out ideas. While we were there, we saw three separate cars run red lights. The biggest observation that I could see of why they were running the red light is they're coming east on Tower, and you have the lights on Tower, and there's only two lights up there. People don't necessarily see those lights. They're looking farther up the road to the green lights where Tower turns right onto Green Bay. They see green lights ahead, but they don't see the red lights where they are. So they blow through that intersection and go through. And as we know, there's bowlers there, that's a very dangerous spot for kids. The bowlers are put there to try and, you know, pull the pedestrians back, but a lot of people are going through that intersection. Just because there aren't accidents and because people aren't dying, doesn't mean it's not a dangerous setup. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Come on up. Hello, Jeffrey.
Apparently, as I get creakier and creakier, I notice. Jeffrey List, 640 Winnetka Muse, Winnetka. A couple of observations, just listening is very informative discussion, and the question of village control or state control, it's above my pay grade, but you guys wrestle with it. But I don't think I would want to make my decision with any real consideration of whether or not a four-way stop sign at Merrill is not that important, and I think in the great scheme of things, for that particular decision. Secondly, one of the things that's not been mentioned, which is a wild card, which we have no way which will go, is the fact that we do not know when or if commuter transportation will be big, depending on what Chicago does in terms of what it does with its downtown and what Metro does. So that can make a difference on parking lot occupancy. But again, I don't know, anybody has a crystal ball, but it's something that should be talked about. Now, my, things that I was concerned about forthcoming here was the problem of the always signs at Linden and the always signs at Merrill. Clearly, the Linden thing is the decision of Glencoe, what they want to tell the state, and we don't have any concern with it, except if you end up with an always stop of some kind at Linden, and another always stop at Merrill, and a stop at Gage, and a stop at Tower, what we have is the, if I use a dirty word, the Wilmetization of Winnetka. I mean, I don't know anybody who likes driving through Wilmetts on Green Bay Road. It is just a pain, they don't know how to judge their time and everything. So let me just talk a little bit about the exit to Green Bay from Merrill. Now, that's, that's an area I have driven for many, many years, at different times of the day and so forth. To me, the idea of reducing it to one lane out is a mistake, with all due respect, and an unnecessary one. Right now, technically speaking, there are three lanes to exit. The big problem is that the lanes have never been marked well or long enough, which I think I've mentioned to a number of people over the last few years. And the biggest problem there is the left lane. There's not enough room for the, get into the left lane. And what happens if you have a left lane functioning and a middle lane functioning and a right lane functioning, there's a lot less blockage going through. The biggest problem I see on exiting is one that's kind of been mentioned, is the sightline going south. You really have to be very slow about picking your car out before you make that left turn, or I guess going straight ahead. But my experience has been that every car I watch is pretty careful before going ahead. They don't just go blindly without looking. And I think the traffic studies show, there haven't been many problems there over the years. So I think that is a really good solution from the traffic point of view. Now, from the pedestrian point of view, there are relatively few pedestrians that I've noticed going north and south on the east side of Green Bay, crossing Merrill Street. That is not a high-traffic pedestrian area. That is not a high-traffic pedestrian area. And also, I've never thought I'd be a problem exiting on Merrill without being able to see a pedestrian. And the idea of that bump out there would eliminate the ability to have three lanes. Now, maybe better signage and things like that might help, but basically, I don't see the need there. Again, look at the traffic study as to what's happened. Actually, that's about the most important thing. Everything else, I have a feeling you know which way you're going, and that's fine. But one thing I would make is if you forget about whether or not there's a always stop at Merrill or up at Linden, it shouldn't affect all the rest of the three options. I mean, those are not dependent on the four-way signs, which were quote "assumed" in those things, even though the traffic recommendation was against it. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any others?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm Peter Eck. I live at 957 Euclid Avenue. Thank you for doing this session. I'm a Hubbard Woods resident, so certainly passionate about the project and wish it well. Couple of things that came to mind just listening to the discussion tonight. One is the idea of the bump outs, I think is really interesting for pedestrian safety. As somebody who's driven every which combination in the neighborhood, we should think about when you're heading north on Tower Road at Kyoto and the Graders intersection at Gage, if somebody's turning left without the bump out today, you can get around them to the right. So that does help keep that flow moving. I think that's legal. The other thing is to be curious what sort of computer simulation work has been done to look at the flow of traffic under these different models. Just hearing the discussion about a four-way stop, I don't think anybody's certain if that is going to be a good or bad idea. We don't really know. So how can we get better information? Can we actually try it? Could we put up temporary stop signs there and see what happens for three weeks? I think it's interesting with human nature, people are very good at finding an easier way to do things. And so we will learn a lot as we assess what the reactive behavior is. Does it suddenly become the better option to actually go up Tower Court there and go behind Walgreens and, you know, skip a light and two stop signs, and then you've got a bunch of people whipping around by the Menos corner? Well, nobody is wanting that outcome, but that might be it. Does it suddenly become better to take a right at Tower Road there and go up Old Green Bay where you have one stop sign before you get to Scott, and you can go pretty fast on that road? Right? So I think there are serious opportunities for unintended consequences from this, and it's not to drag things down or say this, any of this is a bad idea. But when I'm presented with information and I don't know the best answer, I always ask, how can I get better information so I can make a better decision? So I think we're on the right track. Thank you for doing tonight, and thanks for considering the points.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I've heard from several people already in Old Green Bay Road, they're very concerned about what we're going to do.
Anybody else out there?
Hello. I have not been here for quite some time. I have either lived or worked in Winnetka for my entire life. So I own 950 Green Bay Road building, which has definitely impacted on what you're doing. I'm 100% on board of increasing parking spots. Obviously, it's been a disaster since we built the building in 1960. When I look at some of the ideas, I worry. Please be considerate of the businesses in the area. We have had every year something happening with the thoroughfare into Hubbard Woods area. Hubbard Woods is a gem. I don't think it's used to its potential. Everybody that I know, when I mention it, they say, isn't that where Home Alone is? I said, yes. They said, can we go skating in the park? The answer is no. So I, I want to just say, please be so considerate with the timeframe and how it's going to impact businesses. We struggle so much. Our real estate taxes are out of sight. And to be able to keep businesses afloat in our area, this will significantly impact that ability. So I'm here tonight to just put that little piece in your head and ask, when you look at all of these different studies, look at what you are creating. If you're creating a substantially amount, greater amount of parking spots, awesome. I think the parking garage, I'm amazed no one has gotten hurt. The staircase is terrible. You have to, have to. I mean, I think someone's going to fall through there. Signage and also lineage. If you can put more lines, maybe instead of a four-way stop, you put a big yellow crosswalk. People know if they see pedestrians, you're going to stop to let them go across. Maybe something to that effect. I agree with the other people, putting so many stoplights or stop signs is, I don't think it's going to impact it. And I will tell you, every day I go on Gage Street, that light needs to be fixed. It is red for way, way, way too long. And my other concern is Sacred Heart School. Parents do this roundabout thing. My parking spot is in the alley. I know. I am not coming to work between 8:30 and 9:00, and I'm not leaving to go anywhere between 2:30 and 3:00. I, I don't know how you handle Merrill because they are all lined up there. Maybe you come with different kind of rotation for them so it takes pressure off of Green Bay Road. There's Burr Avenue. There's a couple other options that could be investigated, and that could help what happens on Green Bay Road. So anyways, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out and sharing. Anybody else? Come on up, Terry.
Hi. I'm Terry Dason. I live in Winnetka. I lived in Hubbard Woods for 32 years, and I'm glad you're talking about this. My concern, and it's due to the last speaker, I am concerned about the businesses. I'm really concerned about the businesses because we are now doing a project this year that's going to affect them, and then we're talking about another three years, and we're going to do it again. So anything you can do to take that into consideration, and especially when I saw that the project could last for 11 months in, in the jurisdiction takeover, I'm very concerned about how that's going to affect our businesses in Hubbard Woods. So just please help us with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, anybody else? No inspiration. Okay. I will now close public comment. We'll bring it back up here. We want to go through this last, was that the last slide?
Last slide.
Yeah, the last slide. Next steps.
If I may, one of the things that the Phase 1, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong on this, of the study that we just started looking at traffic signals, so we actually found a couple detector loops that are non-operational. Those happen to be one near Gage, so we're working with IDOT to get those addressed. Once those are back on, I think that's going to help a little bit with the traffic part.
But you mean where you pull up on Gage and you wait for it, the pressure, it's not working?
It's, the line's cut.
Oh.
So as part of when IDOT comes-
That will be a massive improvement.
When IDOT comes through to resurface that roadway, they have to replace all those loops anyways. That'll all get addressed.
Yeah. I mean, literally, 11 o'clock at night, you're sitting at Graders for an hour before it changes. It's crazy.
I have a 15-second rule, but I won't talk about it here.
Officer?
Going to put a little air tag on you.
Go ahead, Obad.
So just to summarize, the staff ask is like, staff is looking direction from village council for the next step, and how we looking is to, number one, is accept the traffic study recommendation and finalize the street escape council, concept plan based on that, which can include, include the option B as a general preferred option by the village, which requires the jurisdictional transfer of Green Bay Road from Tower to Scott. Number two is at Hubbard Woods horseshoe circulation, as we discussed, leave the vehicular traffic circulation as existing, such as counterclockwise. And number three is accepting or accept the proposal to install a four-way stop sign at Merrill intersection. And then at the last, based on those recommendations, move forward with the remaining phase one study. So now, if you have any questions, we can answer.
Thanks. I think what I'd like to do, guys, is let's start with number two first, because I think it's kind of a no-brainer, and this is going, going forward on the phase one. We have to do it. So there's not, there shouldn't be a lot of discussion about this. If we want to explore jurisdictional transfer, we got to get there.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, and I'm sensitive to what Terry just said about businesses and things, but the last thing is we can't put our head in the sand that at some point the infrastructure under this road has to get, I mean, the worst thing that could happen is the water main could fail, and you could have a Skokie situation where, you know, businesses' basements are flooded in the middle of winter, and it takes three weeks to open. So, you know, I think the timeline of 2029, although it's far out there, I mean, we have to start planning for this stuff. I don't think we can ignore it.
I agree. I agree.
I just want to close the loop a little bit on what I recall from our last study session, is that, going back to what we already talked about a little bit, I recall us understanding that if we did the JT, that was going to be a significantly longer, bigger project compared if we kept it. And we talked about the impact on businesses. And I recall at the time, we were all quite concerned. I remember Terry, I think even several businesses came at the time. And I don't recall if it was anecdotal or something, but I thought that the businesses actually, overall, still wanted us to pursue the JT to-
I don't understand what they don't know.
Well, I mean, and I know, I think that's part of what we, don't care about, but that's what I understood, is in general, they still wanted the idea of the bump outs and-
But, but I also noticed with JT, increased costs and increased liability to this village. Is that correct? Or no?
Well, I mean, the way you're looking at it is twofold. Sorry, Rob, you can go ahead. Is, yes, we take responsibility for maintenance of the road.
Yeah.
This road's lasted 80 years. So yeah, we're taking on an 80-year, maybe even more, depreciating asset going forward. So there is going to be a cost there.
And now the-
But we also have the freedom to do what we want to.
I was going to say, and the differences are narrowed now. It sounds like if the construction project is significant, no matter what, the JT just gives us advantages to, to pursue whether or not it's a four-way stop sign, whether it's a blinker, whether these bump outs-
It gives us a lot of flexibility.
Which we wouldn't have otherwise.
And we didn't talk about, I think, which is a key component, what we heard from the businesses the first time, is the mid-block- Crossing, and that very long block between Tower and Gage. I think that's one of the things that the businesses really liked.
Did we, or did we not, at that time, back to Rob's point, talk a little bit about widening the sidewalks and narrowing the road, which was something, we did talk about that, right? And that's, and that was something I think the businesses liked, but that's no longer probably on the table.
I don't know that road.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I would like everybody to take the chance, or take the opportunity to get up one summer morning and walk Green Bay Road from Tower to Gage. And you tell me, if you were pushing a stroller, or if you were in a wheelchair, would you be able to navigate that section of sidewalk?
It's tough.
So the problem is, is that as long as we're going to permit sidewalk dining, that it's, you're going to have businesses that are spilling out into the street and making it impossible for anybody who's wheel-bound to get through there. It really is, and then try to walk a dog through there on top of it. I mean-
So obviously, we don't have to decide that now.
No, no, but I'm just saying that those are the sort of flexibilities that we have.
So then, we have the flexibility to really dig into that with this stuff.
Right. Or we could do those little pocket, the things that you guys were in love with before. I would, if I could. What are those things called? Pocket parks?
What do you, oh, Parklets.
Parklets. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Parklets, yeah. Well, you know, we're the idea people, right? They still have some of that.
That's a bad idea.
That was the COVID term. I would add one thing, though. So whether we jurisdictional transfer or we don't, one of the benefits, obviously, if, by jurisdictional transferring, there's, there's a couple things to consider. One is currently right now, when, when commercial businesses come through and they want to do improvements, we have an example that's happening right now. There's, there's potential delays just getting IDOT permits that goes away, that helps businesses. Jurisdictional transfer allows us the flexibility to modify the corridor and manage it how we want, to the, to the council and the community's discretion. One other aspect of this as well is that we're not going to, we're not, by doing this process, we don't give up the classification of the roadway as a FAU route, which is a federal route, which means it's still eligible for federal money to help in those costs for long-term maintenance. There is, but it's, it's no different than some of the other streets that we have. So we'll still be able to go after that funding to help offset it, which was a deciding factor for Glencoe when they decided to, to take over the corridor as well, and they have a longer stretch, but-
Yeah, I was wondering about, and that's, that to me, I mean, don't get me wrong, soft benefits to control, if we want a flashing light versus a stop sign to keep, you know, keep traffic going. I just am trying to understand the hard costs of the village.
So the, when it comes to the jurisdictional transfer, that negotiation is a process. We can't tell you today what that hard cost project would be.
Yeah.
But it does place us in the position for funding, and IDOT, if it's, if it's the right plan, would support some of these applications that we would be submitting if the JT were to go forward. I would say any project that involves getting a permit or working with IDOT is a real cost and a real impediment. With every single project we work on, it's months and months of delay.
That's horrible.
And that's, there is a cost avoidance, and you have local control, which Terry knows, we've had any number of issues pop up at Hubbard Woods where it's like, okay, it's IDOT, we don't have any discretion. But it's a real challenge.
That reminds me of the Tower Road Bridge that just immediately got shut down and worked on, and then they wanted to redirect traffic on Forest Way. You know, I think, I, I think that I've become in favor of the transfer. Yeah, yeah. So.
Funny. So let me just confirm, staff is okay with proceeding with the Phase 1? Just, right, right? We all good in that? Okay. Now, the more confusing aspect of this thing is number one. Option B is generally preferred by the community. I don't, it's a statement, I guess, but we don't need to give the village, we don't need to give you guys any direction on option B, do we?
I think it's a rollie to do that.
Yeah, well, that's what, that was my thinking, is, is I don't think this is the time to be making these sorts of decisions, whether it's a stop sign.
I can clarify the options. Option, so option A would be the one at the, just to make sure. Yes. Option A is the one at the top of the slide here, which would be no bump outs into Green Bay Road. Option B is the one at the bottom that would have bump outs into Green Bay Road.
Well, that's all provisional, obviously.
Thanks.
Right? I mean, I think we're all open to it, right, at this point?
Yeah, I think we, I mean, A would be great if we could get it, and B would be also potentially great if we think it works and doesn't cause problems.
Yeah. On, on B, the horseshoe, I mean, does anybody really feel one way or another about that thing as far as changing it?
I think, I like the way it is. I think that the community had said they like the direction, the way that it is, and they don't want the stacking up. So I like keeping it the way it is.
Kirk?
I'll comment. When we started this process and when there was the open house, I was a proponent of the option two or option three, but after hearing the comments and thinking more about it, the businesses, the only businesses on the horseshoe are on the South Side, and asking vehicles to go around the block to be able to get to them-
That's a good point.
-is negative for those businesses. And also the comment made tonight about the cars stacking and causing problems about just accessing those parking stalls and exiting that area. My original thought pattern in favor of option two or three had to do with getting cars easily and quickly to the parking garage, but that would be at the detriment of the other items I commented.
Yeah, it did, like a little bad.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm in supportive of what's being presented and proposed.
I think Jeff did bring up a good idea, though, about, you know, we really need some good striping there, because it's just this open intersection and-
That'd be great. And also, sometimes cars turn left in there anyway.
Yeah, they do. Even those that do not inter-sign, I think striping with arrows would be helpful that, don't go there.
would be helpful that, don't go there.
I'm going to say that. On that point, it was commented about the three left turn lanes coming out. Are there, and I think I pretend there is three or there are three, but can we, we have control of that. Can we try to fix that now?
The striping that's faded away at that intersection, I'll talk with Director Tom Powers and have the Public Works team go out there. Again, when IDOT comes through to resurface, they're going to resurface a little bit of the intersection as well. So that'll all get cleaned up through there. But that's something we can do now. We can clarify that.
Good. And maybe they could get the right turn lane on Hibbard and Willow figured out, too.
Chris, I'm glad you said
Oh, God.
Hey, Chris, I'm glad you said
That one's not tonight, but that's coming.
Chris, I actually, I actually measured that. You have enough room because that left turn lane is so big to narrow that left turn lane and have three lanes there as well.
I agree. I was going to bring a surprise later in the year.
You're sticking out a lot. I've whacked people twice already since I've got my new truck, just because I'm
You're confessing all these crimes to me.
There's no crime about it. I stick my hand out the window and say, I'm really sorry.
We have a taser here for the police officer.
Only for another month and then you'll never know. You'll never, you'll never know where I am. Okay, let's, and item C, accept the proposal to install a four-way stop. I don't think we're there.
No, we're not there. No.
And, you know, much to Peter's statement, and I just think we need to think about this one more. And I don't think this is on the critical path right now. So I'm certain, I think this may be one of those things that we put in and take out five times before we get
No, and I, and I've been the one who was kind of pushing it. More important to me for jurisdictional transfer, for all the reasons we talked about, is that mid-block crossing. I think that will be very beneficial to all the businesses. You know, just increase the flow in the area. So, yeah, I think we, bump outs would be a great first step, you know, whether they're jurisdictional transfer or not. And then you can kind of incrementally look at what you want to do at an intersection.
See a whole plan, not piecemeal.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, look, I've been through this once with Streetscape and, you know, as the project goes through, your thinking on it enlarges and you start to see things you didn't see before. And you start to look at the space through the lens of what can be rather than what is. And it's going to change. But we got till 2029.
Can I write on that, write on the coattails of that comment? And I'm planting a seed with, with the design team. I brought this up last time, but the, and you acknowledged tonight with Tower Road and just the access going east-west for pedestrians and the challenges with accessible access on both the north and south side, I think that whole corridor just needs to really be analyzed and designed. I know that wasn't part of tonight's presentation, but I think there's a lot of design details that need to be thought through.
And I know Lakota has, I'm sorry, not Lakota. I know Tesca has the chops to figure this out and bring us something that's really unique and creative and functional. You know, that's what we got you for, Jody, is, you know, to figure this stuff out. But, you know, bring us something that's, that's a little visionary. This has been a big deal for Kirk since he's come on. And I think now we've heard from two people who live up in the same neighborhood there that this is an area that if we can do something better, this is our shot to do it. So let's bring a lot of stuff here. We can throw it against the wall and see what makes the most sense for the community. So
Good.
We good?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I can go home and walk the dog?
That's it.
Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thanks.